I spent a lot of...
It was six o'clock this morning, started flowing snow and it was like...
I'll tell you later.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 29th. It is 7:00 PM. If you have a cellphone, if you could turn that on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that. The meeting will be called to order, and our first item is the invocation and then the pledge allegiance, and we'll ask Commissioner Henshaw to lead us in both. Stand, please.
Heavenly Father, we gather tonight with gratitude in our hearts for this wonderful nation that you have blessed so much. We thank you for the opportunity to vote for our leaders, and we pray your blessing and guidance on the leaders we have. And us as commissioners, just put your wisdom in our hearts and bless the decisions we make, that they will be the best possible choices we can make for our community. And pray that you'll be with our troops overseas and our enforcement officers here in the homeland, that you would just protect them and continue to bless this wonderful country. Thy name is great. Amen.
Blessed are we just to the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Henshaw. Next item is a roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
President.
Maxbauer?
Here.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Here.
Lemko?
Here.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Here.
Chairman Inman?
Here.
Next item is the approval of minutes, and we've got five sets to approve. I'm also taking them in order. We need approval for the January 25th, 2011 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Wheelock.
Support.
Seconded by Fleece. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Minutes of the January 26th, 2012 special meeting.
Moved and approved.
Moved by Henshaw, seconded by Fleece. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Meeting minutes of February 10th, special meeting of 2012. Moved by Commissioner Lemko, support by Commissioner Fleece. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Now we move on to the minutes of the February 21st, 2012 special meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Fleece.
Support.
Seconded by Commissioner Gilman to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Moving on to the February 21st, 2012 closed session minutes that you have on your desk.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Maxbauer to approve the closed session minutes for February 21st. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Okay, we will now move to public comment, and the clerk will read the rules for public comment.
Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person should be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. Chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, but shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay, you've heard the rules regarding public comment. You may speak now. We also have a second public comment towards the end of our meeting, and if you feel that you want to speak on a matter that is part of our agenda and wish to wait till that at time to speak, would you please indicate to me so I can call on you at that particular time?
I was just wondering if the discussion about the horses is still on the agenda?
Yes, yeah, that's still on the agenda.
I'm going to ask you something.
Sure, you can make me a comment during that discussion. Yes, yes, sir.
Can you support the training and the training too?
Yes. Okay. Yep, all right. Excuse me, yes, it is. Okay. Anyone else want to speak? Yes. You want to start right now? Okay, go ahead.
May I proceed?
All right, go ahead and go up there, give your name and address and then...
I have some material to give.
Okay? All right.
Ellis Boul is my name. That's E-L-L-I-S-B-O-A-L. I'm from Charlevoix, address 9330 Boyne City Road. With me is Luanne Cosma of Novi, Michigan, who will soon be moving into our area. We're with an organization, Ban Michigan Fracking, and we're here to discuss with you a couple of minutes about fracking. Our organization, BanMichiganFracking.org, that's our website. We're here at the suggestion of Tom Mayer, who's in the audience and may have further comments. We understand that you have an injection well in this county in Mayfield Township, the Weber Well. We know there's been some controversy about that. What you may not know is that that well has accepted frac waste from two wells in Calcasas County called Excelsior Wells. They're both on Sunset Trail between Calcasas and Grayling. One of the documents I handed to the clerk indicates that frac waste has gone to your injection well from those two frac wells. I visited those frac wells a couple of... excuse me, I visited the... your injection well a couple of months ago. On the next day, I got a call from the owner or manager, I don't remember his name, but we talked for a couple of minutes, and what he told me is that that well has unlimited capacity, as I understood him, and it could possibly accept frac wastes forever. I'm not an expert on injection wells, perhaps some of you know more about the technology than I do, but it was interesting to me that he said unlimited capacity because in the state of Pennsylvania, there were 1,000 frac wells, this is for natural gas, drilled in the year 2009, 1,000 more in the year 2010. I don't have figures for 2011, but if that same... if that same volume is going to come to Michigan someday, there may be 1,000 wells per well, per year drilled in this state, and a lot of that frac waste may be coming to Grand Traverse County, and this is why I thought you might be interested in our observations. I mentioned there are the two wells on Sunset Trail. They're the only two wells, frac wells, horizontally fracked shale, deep shale wells, producing gas in the state right now, although many... several more, a dozen or so more have been drilled and fracked, but none of them are producing except for those two right now. So that makes me wonder if, gee, maybe the frac boom is over in Michigan, but I attended a meeting last week of the MOGA, Michigan Oil and Gas Association, had a seminar specifically on the subject of fracking. About 120 people were there, from the gas and oil industry executives. They had people brought in from Lansing and from Washington, D.C. to address them, and what I noticed very intensely at that meeting was what was the intense amount of interest in the fracking process and the prospects for it in Michigan, the possibility that there might be a moratorium in this state or other states. And by the way, Ban Michigan Fracking is not for a moratorium, we're for a ban. We can get into the details of that if you'd like, but I want to be clear about that. What are our concerns about fracking? I won't go into them in detail because you've probably read a certain amount about them over the last year or so, but they concern air, they concern injection-induced earthquakes such as have happened in eastern Ohio and in Arkansas and, I believe, other places. Even though Michigan hasn't experienced many earthquakes, the earthquakes in these other locations have been induced by frac waste induced... excuse me, injected into the injection wells. So that could become a concern here, especially if there's 1,000, 2,000, or 5,000 frac wells drilled in this state. The other point I want to make, and I'll close with this point, is there have been decisions from two judges in New York State just last week. They're judges of the Supreme Court. Actually, the Supreme Court in that state is the lowest level of court. The highest level of court is called the Court of Appeals, but these two judges both upheld local bans on fracking, or in one of them, the town of Dryden, I believe the local ban was on all oil and gas production, and that ban was upheld despite a preemption wording in the New York State statute. I've given copies of those two decisions to the clerk, you can look them over, your legal counsel can look them over. I know the law of Michigan is different from the law of New York, it's all different from one state to the next, and those decisions might, you know, might not hold water here, or maybe they do. Those... a couple of those decisions compared the laws favorably to the laws of Colorado and Pennsylvania, saying similar results would obtain there. Again, I don't know, I'm not a municipal attorney, I am an attorney, but not a municipal attorney. I'm not an expert in that area of law, labor laws, what I do.
He winded up, he could...
Okay. So I call your attention to those. I gave my business card to the clerk, you're welcome to call me in Charlevoix. Luanne Cosma may have other remarks if you have questions. And BanMichiganFracking.org.
Right. Thank you for coming.
All right.
Good.
Anyone else wish to speak on any matter of public comment?
Hello, my name is Tom Mayer. I'm a resident of Traverse City. I've been on the ballot twice to be on the county commission. This is probably my third or fourth installment about the subject of injection wells, which I've paid quite a bit of attention to and attended several meetings, including the last time in September when the EPA heard about the Weber Well in Mayfield Township, and then the owner of the well, the team services or team completion decided to impose a six-month moratorium on their decision rather than listen or wait until the EPA judged on that. That's the way I understand that. So that six months will be up in sometime next month, I guess. Also, in the last few months, I probably would have preferred to come here in January, the fracking took place in Calcasas County. There's a few documents that Ellis has that list maybe four injection wells that would have taken waste from those two injection wells, north and south of M-72, west of Calcasas, one that he mentioned. I'm pretty sure also that Ellis has some other information, because I've seen it actually, that shows that waste from Mesaki came up here too, from fracking. And when I talk about fracking, I'm not necessarily against all fracking, I'm against the horizontal fracking, the one that uses massive amounts of fresh water, which we treasure here, and uses a lot more chemicals in addition to make the right ratio with that fresh water. What I gave Linda Coburn, the clerk, is that the DEQ had a speaker at a League of Women Voters meeting just a week ago tonight. There were three people, including Ellis as one of the speakers, there was an oil and gas person, a ban fracking person, and a DEQ person. The DEQ person was very forthcoming and supplied me with a list of 30 injection wells in Grand Traverse County, that was a lot more than I thought there were, and the ones that are marked ACT under status mean active, there's 20 of those, so the Weber Well's just one. But that's the one that I'm most concerned about because it may be perfectly legal when they don't disclose what their formulas are, it's proprietary, there's lots of products that have proprietary protection, they don't have to divulge what the contents or ingredients are of something. That may be fine when they're injecting it, or that may be fine when they're using it to frac a well, but I think it's a little bit different when they bring it to an injection well. Maybe we have some say over that because the wells are classified as to what type of material goes into them, and one of the things that we were concerned about last year was whether they would change the Weber Well from a Class II to a Class I, which Class I means worse, more dangerous materials. If you don't disclose what you're putting in the tanker truck and bringing it to the injection well because you're claiming the proprietary excuse, how do we know what is going into the Weber Well? Because it does make a difference. It does make a difference because somebody took the time to classify them, and that's what we were all arguing about last year, is whether there should be a Class I designation for that well or not. So the question is, what's in the formula that they use to frac the wells? Shouldn't we know that? And how would we classify it if we don't know what it is? That's really my big question. Once I figured that out, I knew that it was time to come back and make everybody aware because I know all you are concerned. Twice now, you've written up a resolution that said that you don't approve of the Class I designation, and by that I mean... or you mean, I would assume, that you don't approve of more toxic waste being brought to our county. So I think we need to find out if they're going to inject it into our county, what the contents are. Otherwise, how do we classify it?
All right. Okay, thank you.
The other information that I gave you is, it kind of tells about the design or construction of a vertical well versus a horizontal well, and those are supplied by the Michigan Oil and Gas Producers Education Foundation, so you can assume there's a little bit of bias in there. But because the diagrams are nice, you know, cartoon color and all that, I thought that that would be valuable to show you so that you can get some kind of an idea that there really is a distinct difference in volume of fresh water, use of chemicals to ratio with that water, and that that's much more of a concern than vertical wells. The other thing is, is that when you carry on an argument or a debate about fracking, you're often attacked, as I've been attacked or countered, with the... this has been going on for 10 or 20 years in the state of Michigan, but what they're talking about is not horizontal wells, horizontally fracked wells, they're talking about vertical wells that don't go nearly as deep, and of course, by nature, don't use the same volumes of water and chemicals.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure the commission gets a copy of your material. All right. Anyone else wish to speak under public comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will close public comment. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda, and I would just like to add one thing under new business with the acceptance of the board. Commissioner Henshaw and myself will not be available for the March 27th claims, and Commissioner Gilman needs a partner, so I asked Commissioner Thomas if he would be available to partner with him on the claim schedule, and based on our rules, we have to ratify that at a meeting to have the commissioner step in on a committee to take that over.
Actually, I think we passed a motion the chairman can just appoint. Just a couple of weeks ago. Ratify just to say...
I think the chairman appoints and then the board ratifies is what happens. So we can just put that under new business and we'll just get that done and over with. Commissioner Richardson?
I move for approval of the agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved by Richardson, seconded by Thomas.
Don't we also have a closed session?
Yeah, and the closed session is listed in our agenda, we'll just indicate what the matter is.
We do need, under the administrator's report, I had sent the email on the Gomosur litigation, I'd like to add that under my section.
Okay.
And yes, we do need a closed session, yeah, this evening.
So we want to go back to Commissioner Richardson, is that fine?
That's fine. Sure.
Seconds? Okay. So we have a motion to approve the agenda with the add-on of the claims person on the 27th, the Gomosur situation under administrator's report, and to notify the public, we will be going into closed session. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. All right, we have an agenda. Now we go to special orders of business. First one is the Four Corners Redemption Project Brownfield Plan Amendment. I suspect Gene and your entourage will be coming up, and get yourself introduced to the audience and the television people, and if you could give us a summary and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Yes. My name is Jean Durenzi. I'm the deputy director of the Grand Traverse County Planning and Development Department. Here today also is the developer, John Baumann, from Baumair Corporation, and their environmental consultant, Eric Houser. The two brownfield plans that are before you today really has taken several years to develop. It brings a comprehensive cleanup approach for this Four Corners site. The Brownfield Authority threw several hired, you know, professional environmental consultant, Horizon Environmental, and they completed on behalf of the Brownfield Authority data analysis, groundwater sampling, and technical review to really develop the two brownfield plans before you today to bring this comprehensive approach. The first public hearing is on the Union 76 gas station, and that encompasses 25 parcels, which is the parcels that the CVS property will be developed on. And the overall project gives the Brownfield Authority access to the property to put their remediation system, as well as the DEQ access to the property to put their treatment remediation system in as well, which is a very important component to this project, to have that comprehensive cleanup approach. The overall cost is $6,402,500, of which $1,782 is associated with the CVS extraordinary cost, and the remaining costs are for the off-site environmental issues associated with this commingled plan.
All right. We will now open it up to a public hearing, and then after that, we will bring it back to the board for discussion and possible action. So I now open up the public hearing on this matter. Does anybody wish to speak on behalf of the public? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to the Board of Commissioners, and we have a resolution in our packet under this item.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Lemko, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the resolution for the Four Corners Redemption Project Brownfield Plan Amendment. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Wheelock?
Gene, just for clarification, this plan is two separate plans, one for the 701 property and one for the Four Corners property. They're two separate plans, but they will work... they will coincide when they're being done correctly?
Yes, legislatively, we have to amend both plans. We can't combine them, so that's why we have to have two amended brownfield plans.
Okay, Commissioner Maxbauer?
And I just want to be sure that the public understands that this topic involves the CVS...
The first public hearing is relative to the CVS redevelopment. Yes.
And I just wanted the public to make sure that if they wanted to comment on this, this is the time. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Lemko?
The Brownfield Authority has approved this.
All right. Any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Second item under special order of business is the 701 West Front Street Brownfield Plan Amendment. Gene, if you could give us an overview on that, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
This is for the 701 West Front Street, which is the Hand Surgeon Center, which is immediately across from the Union 76 station. This amended plan adds $713,000 to the original brownfield plan, which is really for the operation and maintenance of the multi-phase extraction system that's currently in place. The importance of the multi-phase extraction system being operated at the same time as the CVS development and that cleanup really is critical to bring that...
Cohesiveness.
Cohesiveness to the cleanup. The recommend...
Say that twice, backwards.
It's his birthday. Today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, honey. Every four years?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would... Oh, we have a public...
The recommendation is to approve the brownfield plan. The Brownfield Authority approved this at their January 25th meeting. The city commission concurred at their February 21st meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Gene, could you just clarify for those watching how the funding works on this, I mean, just kind of a general outline about funding works on this?
For this... for this plan?
For this plan.
For this...
That we're adding $713,000 to it?
Currently, right now, the Brownfield Authority is operating and maintaining the multi-phase extraction system out of our local site remediation fund. So we are doing that out of our fund, and we are also looking at a DEQ loan to do that operation and maintenance, and we're also... we'll be going out, and this is part of the overall strategy of looking at the potential liable parties to reimburse for those costs.
But in the meantime, the authority then is responsible for the additional loan from the DEQ?
Yes, we will be.
Thank you.
But the funding will be recovered on tax increment financing, correct?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. All right, now we will open up the public hearing on the 701 West Front Street Brownfield Plan Amendment as described. Is there any public comment regarding that plan amendment from the public? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will take it back to the Board of Commissioners for approval.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the 701 West Front Street Brownfield Plan Amendment.
All right. Nice second.
All right. Moved by Wheelock, all over everywhere. Seconded by Fleece. To approve the plan as presented on page 5 of the resolution, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Maxbauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes.
All right. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note to give credit to staff in Brownfield Authority for staying with this project. This is a commingled contaminated site that has been in our community for well over 50 years, and we are finally truly coming to a point that it can be cleaned up and developed into something that is not an eyesore for our community.
Well said.
They need to... I appreciate the fact that they've stayed with it because there's been a lot of stumbling blocks.
All right. Thank you for your efforts. Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
We will move now to the consent calendar, and for those in the audience, the consent calendar is receive and file of information in various meeting minutes. It is also the preliminary recommendations of the committee of the whole that meet for the first three Wednesday evenings, and then this is the final recommendation that comes to the board. So with that, the clerk will read the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with with one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file, one, resolution opposing the early release of violent offenders by MDA, Oakland County. Two, correspondence from Village of Byflake. Three, area agency on aging minutes from December 1st, 2011. Four, special G5 subcommittee meeting of December 7th, 2011. Five, Conservation Resource Alliance minutes of December 15th, 2011. Six, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission minutes of December 20th, 2011. Seven, Department of Human Services Board minutes of December 28th, 2011. Eight, Conservation Resource Alliance minutes of January 6th, 2011. Nine, Board of Public Works minutes of January 12th, 2012. Ten, Central Board minutes of January 12th, 2012. Eleven, Road Commission organizational session minutes of January 12th, 2012. Twelve, Road Commission regular meeting minutes of January 12th, 2012. Thirteen, Traverse Area District Library regular meeting minutes of January 19th, 2012. Fourteen, Road Commission special minutes of January 24th, 2012. Fifteen, Traverse Area District Library special meeting minutes of January 26th, 2012. Referrals, none. Approval, the Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Sixteen, Sheriff's Office property room surplus items. Seventeen, Sheriff's Office approval to purchase vehicle. Eighteen, Sheriff Office authority to negotiate settlements under the provision for reimbursement to the County Act. Nineteen, recruitment process for county administrators position. Resource Management Administration Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Twenty, resource recovery, 2012 holler licenses. Twenty-one, security dress buttons policy and procedure. Twenty-two, conservation district lease correction amendment. Twenty-three, facilities management, approval to purchase cargo van. Twenty-four, Board of Commissioners approval of work plan for 2012. Twenty-five, approval of Commissioners' compensation for 2013, 2014. Twenty-six, 2013 elected official salary and car allowance information. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Twenty-seven, 2012 remuneration grant acceptance. Twenty-eight, approval... Twenty-eight, Approval of 2012 Remonumentation Service Contracts. Twenty-nine, Michigan State Housing Authority Home Buyer Purchase Rehabilitation Program Grant Acceptance. Thirty, Land Information Access Association Web Streaming of County Meetings. Thirty-one, TC Chamber of Commerce Foundation and Northern Initiatives Community Development Financial Institution Application for Manager to Administer CDBG Regional Fund. Thirty-two, Resolution Approving Redemption of the Grand Traverse County Building Authority Bond Series 2003 Prior to Maturity. Thirty-three, Amendment to Lease Contract Between the Building Authority and Grand Traverse County. Thirty-four, Resolution Authorizing Refunding of the Grand Traverse County Building Authority Bond Series 2005 and Approving the Undertaking to Provide Continuing Disclosure. Thirty-five, Budget Adjustments.
Okay. The clerk has read the consent calendar. Does any member of the public wish any of the items under the consent calendar to be pulled for further discussion?
You got remonumentation on that?
Yes.
You wanted to discuss it, right?
Yeah. I think you or one of the commissioners will pull it off.
Twenty-eight.
You're gonna, you're
That's, that's the one he's mentioned.
Yeah. Re-planning on pulling it up? Twenty-seven?
Unless he wants to do it now, he can do it
You can do it or he can do it.
Okay, we'll pull it off.
All right. I'll have you pull it off.
Twenty?
That'd be number
Well, twenty is the service contract.
Twenty-eight. And leave him, twenty-seven alone. Correct. Okay. All right. Okay, that's where the surveyor. Okay. Anybody else in the public wish to have an item pulled from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will come to the County Commission. Does any member of the County Commission wish to have an item pulled from the consent calendar? Commissioner Fleece and then Commissioner Gilman.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five would be Fleece. Commissioner Gilman? Anyone else? Okay. Anyone else? So we have so far item number twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-one pulled off the consent calendar. Twenty-seven, we need a motion to approve the remaining.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of B twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-one.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Support by Commissioner Richardson?
Who pulled off twenty-seven?
Well, when you're talking about the remonumentation grant, you have
Nobody left. Twenty-seven was alone. Twenty-eight is pulled.
Public pulled twenty-eight.
Public pulled, that's the surveyor.
I'll pull twenty-seven.
Well, I don't know how you have the discussion about the contract if you don't have the discussion about the grant.
All right. Well, that's what I asked them.
Just asking who pulled it, that's all. I'll, I'll do it.
You'll do twenty-seven? Okay. All right.
We should say which one we are, please.
Okay. Can we amend your motion, Mr. Wheelock?
You can.
Can we amend your motion?
Don't edit that.
That's fine.
I had twenty-seven.
You had twenty-seven in it? Okay. All right. And it was seconded by Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. All right. The consent calendar is approved with items remaining and that leaves us two items removed from the consent calendar under item H. So we'll go to the first one under item number twenty-three, Facilities Management Approval to Purchase Cargo Van. Commissioner Lemko, you have the floor.
Yeah, I pulled that off because I voted against it before and I'm gonna vote against it again this time. I just don't feel it's right that we should be buying a, a brand-new vehicle for a vehicle that's only gonna be traveling 4,000 up miles a year.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the purchase of the new Ford half-ton cargo van from Signature Ford not to exceed $19,470.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Wheelock. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Fleece. Discussion?
We drive these vehicles until the wheels fall off.
Right. Well, that'll be there forever.
Might as well start.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Lemko?
No.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Okay. We pass it with one name. Moving on to item number twenty-five, Commissioner Fleece, the approval of the Commissioners' Compensation for O thirteen, O fourteen. You have the floor.
I would like to see the Commissioners or the Board reconsider their earlier vote on Commissioner Compensation. What I'd like to see done is the per diems, the insurance, and any other monetary benefits we receive be waived and salary be established that would encompass the present compensation we receive, rather than some Commissioners getting large per diem checks, different ways of moving funds around.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on the floor? We have a, Commissioner Maxbauer?
I'm a firm believer in that you get paid for what you do and therefore I would recommend approval of the resolution resolved by the Board of Commissioners that Grand Traverse County approved the salary and benefit package identified above for the County Commissioners for the election term of 2013 and 2014 as defined on page eighty of our packet.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Maxbauer, seconded by Commissioner Henshaw to approve the compensation for County Commissioners for O thirteen and O fourteen as presented in our packet on page eight. Discussion. Commissioner Richardson?
Larry, did you have a number in mind that you think would cover that or? And what you're talking about here is like one flat rate, you know?
Right.
One flat rate salary and get rid of all the little extra benefits and whatever.
Flat rate salary would replace, the only thing we would keep in addition to the salary would be the mileage. It would replace the per diem, it would replace the insurance that we either take or we don't take. If you don't take the insurance, you're given $2,000 if you accept it. It would replace all of that. So we had two items really. So the public had a clear concept exactly how much each Commissioner was being paid. It'd be the salary and the mileage. And I hadn't added up the figures, but I would say, I would say if you made the salary like eleven, five, or $12,000 with the same increments we have for Vice Chair and Chairman now, in addition to that, that would be fair compensation.
Commissioner Henshaw?
What you're talking about, Commissioner Fleece, sounds a little bit like the communist system where everybody just go do your work and everybody gets the same pay. And what happens under a communist system is people aren't rewarded for their efforts, therefore they don't make the efforts. And, you know, in a communist system, as we saw in communist Russia, you know, everybody got poor. Or in our case, I think just the work simply wouldn't get done. So I guess that concerns me that, you know, workman's worth of wages, whoever's doing work, going out and, you know, taking part in the community, you know, in our case, is compensated. You know, it would be the end of the world, I guess, to do it your way, but I kinda like pay for work.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock and then back to Richardson.
I guess the comment that I'd make to that, Rob, is the fact that I'm pretty confident that the salary that I get with my per diems and my mileage doesn't cover the hours that I spend doing this job. If I'm not doing this job because of what it pays, if I didn't, if I didn't think it made a difference, I wouldn't be doing it.
Right.
And, you know, to, to assume that just because you say we were gonna do it on a flat rate, the job wouldn't get done or I wouldn't continue to do the job the way I do it now, I don't think that's true either, so.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson and then Commissioner Thomas.
Well, I would echo Commissioner Wheelock that I don't think any of us is doing this for the money. But, I mean, to say, okay, we're reimbursing per diem for going to meetings and, yeah, okay, that requires some effort at times. We don't get reimbursed for a lot of other things that take a lot of time, for instance, preparing for meetings, doing research on an issue, meeting or conversing with, you know, county officials on the phone to develop information, talking to the public. We don't get paid for any of that on a four-piece basis. I think what Commissioner Fleece is trying to do is, you know, that it's fair, that there's one flat salary, we all know what that is, there's no little hidden extras here and there, and everybody gets the same amount of money. I think that's, I think that's a really good suggestion.
All right. Commissioner Thomas?
Well, the problem I have with doing away with the per diem is there's nothing in the law that says that any of us have to come to any meetings. And if the incentive of per diem wasn't there, we'd probably have a bunch of empty chairs.
Oh, no. Probably wouldn't.
All right. Commissioner, I forgot who was next, Commissioner Gilman?
You know, human behavior is human behavior. And, you know, when I was offering, in my business, I was offering commissions to the folks who were getting bigger commissions and were selling more, you know? That's just how it is. For me, it'd be a great deal because I probably don't do nearly as much work as Commissioner Maxbauer or Commissioner Lemko or Commissioner Inman. So it'd probably be a wonderful deal for me, but I would tell you this, when I do step away from the job and I hire somebody to take my place so I can get paid the $35 per diem, you know, it's, it's, it's at the very best a break even for me typically as it is. And if it were a flat rate, eventually I'm gonna start taking that attitude, darn it! I, that's, you know, I gotta, I gotta pay somebody and I'm not gonna see any more, you know, in my pocket back to cover for it. Now, it was brought up that we're not doing this for the money, that is absolutely true. But like Commissioner Maxbauer said, when we do put, put a little extra effort in, when sometimes when we've got six or seven meetings in a week, and you referenced fifteen meetings the last time we talked about this, in a month, six or seven meetings in a week sometimes can add up real fast and it can make a difference. And though, we wouldn't necessarily resent it, we might not exactly appreciate that kind of arrangement if all of a sudden our workload is, is increased by quite a bit, which is gonna happen next year anyway, so.
Commissioner Lemko, did you have your hand up? Okay. My comment is that, you know, the Board hasn't, has not seen a raise since 2001. And in fact, we decreased our compensation during the last election cycle with the removal of the spouse and family coverage on healthcare, which substantially reduced the overall County Commissioner budget line item. I think we've done our part in terms of pushing back to help the budget compared to other departments within the county. When Jen assisted us with counties with similar SEVs and populations slightly above us and below us, we were right in the fairway, folks. And most of them had the flat salary plus the per diem. A couple of them had no per diem and a larger salary, but I think, I think it's worked well and it's the present system and the way it's laid out here today in this resolution that passed the Committee, that the base, the base is there for the general stuff, you know, get compensated for and the per diem is there for, you know, for those folks that can take the time to go to these three to four-hour meetings at a time. And the benefits were consistent with the other Commissioners in our same population and SEV market, so I guess I would disagree with the suggestion of removing those. I think overall, we're fairly compensated and we're consistent with it. County commissions are same size in the state of Michigan, so I would be voting for Commissioner Maxbauer's motion. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Fleece?
In conversing with Commissioner Lemko here, we'll just use his figures because I hadn't added any up, but the way he figured, it would be 5,100 for per diem, say 3,300 for
Insurance.
Insurance. Insurance. And
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand for the present salary with no increase since 2001. That comes to 15,400. So perhaps we'd look at 16,000 just to keep it where it is. But the notion that a Commissioner wouldn't attend meetings because they weren't getting paid per diem, any of us, any elected official can attend one meeting a year and statutorily cover our obligation. You're probably not gonna get reelected, but I think Sonny said it pretty clearly and Sonny, I believe, in our earlier vote and conversation, has cost him over $100,000 in insurance premiums in the time he's been on this commission. All I'm saying is this, the public would know exactly what their Commissioners are getting paid, because I'd venture to say every Commissioner at this table is getting paid differently right now. And it doesn't necessarily have to do with them not attending their meetings. It's Commissioners that have the time and perhaps wanna earn some extra bucks, go to these meetings, they stay, it's a three-hour meeting, they stay an hour, hour and a half and they leave and they collect their per diem. I'm not in favor of that and I think in today's world with transparency, I don't see why anybody would be opposed to say a salary of 16,000, you want insurance, you buy your insurance, it covers your per diems, and that's it. Everybody knows what the job pays.
Yeah. I guess my response to that is that when speaking with Jen Seaman, by presenting the option of combining our salary with the cost of healthcare, the bargaining units would see that as an advantage to go in and say, we want the same thing that the County Commission has done, which would cost us a lot more overall compensation to, to all of our staff members. And the second item I'd like to bring up is that, you know, the cost for single healthcare today is 3,300 and the stipend is 2,000, so really, we're only talking about a thousand dollars difference in, in, you know, those that don't take it versus those that can take the stipend. And for the per diems, you know, it's, it's the people that wanna take the extra time and effort to, to go to these educational sessions, to go to these, these events that qualify for county-related meetings and to pick up extra meetings where other people are employed that can't take as many. So I think it's a fair system. It's worked well. We, it hasn't been abused, in my opinion. I haven't been set on claims and accounts for a number of years and I think it's a fair way to compensate County Commissioners. And like I said, it's right down the fairway compared to other County Commissions are same size in our population market. So I will be voting for keeping everything the same.
Who was you comparing yourself to?
It was a list that Jen Seaman provided.
I know, but who was, who was on the list?
You'd have to get that, if you had that available. I didn't bring
Was it staff? Was it union employees? Who was it?
No, no, no. It was County Commissioners.
I said County.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. That's not what you said earlier.
Oh, the people, the issue of compensation for employees if they were able to add their healthcare costs to their salary and buy down if necessary?
You're talking county employees. Now, which county employees are you talking?
All.
All. Most county employees.
Well, I think that's a preposterous statement. Why would you, a Commissioner and Chairman of the Board no less, consider yourself to be the same as an employee that just hired in?
I'm just saying, it could be a flag for bargaining units to go in and say they want the same deal that the County Commission got. That's a concern.
You know, I don't, I don't know of a corporation where the Board, like GM, we'll just use GM, they're paying their, even though they just declared bankruptcy, they cheated everyone that didn't have a second, or a lien on their work. When they declared bankruptcy, a lot of people lost their businesses, their homes, and everything When they declared bankruptcy, a lot of people lost their businesses, their homes, and everything else. And yet, today's paper indicates, or yesterday's, that GM is paying them and it was an exorbitant amount of money to keep the talent. You don't want to keep any talent on this board? You know, why don't we all just take entry level pay at a per hour?
I think you're missing the point. The point is that if the bargaining units want to use as an advantage to, to gain more compensation, they could say, well, the county commission did it, we'd like, we'd like to bargain for the same thing that they did. I'm saying they will, I'm just saying it was a flag the personnel brought up. So in any event, are we ready for a vote? The motion on the floor is to approve the resolution for county commissioner compensation for 2013, 2014, as outlined in your packet on page 80. We'll have a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Richardson?
No.
Lemkohl?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes.
Fleece?
No.
Maxbauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Motion passes with one nay.
Two.
Two nays. Would have been two nays, right? Correct? You and Fleece. Okay. All right, moving on to item number 27. And if you want to do 28 together, that's fine. Commissioner Maxbauer?
Well, I pulled 27. And I, Commissioner Fleece, Commissioner Fleece, Commissioner Willock is exactly right. You can't really pull item number 27 without, or not, item 28 without pulling item 27. And I don't wish to consent to either, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
There we have it.
Okay. And Commissioner Henchel, you had a question on, on item number 28, we asked the surveyor.
I see a county surveyor here at our last, the Ways and Means meeting, we just asked for an update. My, my concern was, we're visiting all these locations and surveying, why aren't we taking GPS coordinates and logging them now so later on we don't have to just go revisit the same location? And I assume there's a good reason for that.
For the record, I'm Robert Mitchell, the county surveyor. Number one, the, the attaining coordinate values under the remonumentation program, there's a very specific procedure to follow. It's not like a normal surveyor would just go out with a real-time unit, get a coordinate in five minutes and drive away. You have to take static observations, you have to have a printout of it, you have to log it for an hour or two. The, the points that are in the woods, you actually have to observe four static points for the one. And they'd have to be a pair of points on one side of the, of the point, which in some places, and where there is, could be a quarter mile away. And you have to have two static points on the other side of the point. And then you'd have to log a traverse between them and balance it. The bottom line is, some of those points could cost more than the monumentation of a corner, just to get the coordinate values, at the specifications required by the state to be funded under the remonumentation program. Some of them could go fairly quick. But the other problem there is, is logistics of doing corners. When I set the model plan out to monument, monument corners in Grand Traverse County, I tried to monument corners in every municipality, every township, so corners were getting done in all the townships in the county, instead of going in and just doing a block of corners. So at this point, we have all the townships have corners done on them, but none of them are completed. To do the GPS coordinates, then we, when we get all the corners done, then we go in and do a block of corners, we get a much better value for the cost of doing them because they're all together. Plus, it's easier to do it that way. And we won't be using money that under the original model plan is set aside to get the monuments in the ground and get the history recorded and get everything done. That's what the push for the remonumentation program was, not the coordinates. So when we get that done, then we'll do the coordinates. If we do coordinates right now, then we're not going to be monumenting corners. That's what happens.
Hang on.
Questions?
Any follow-up questions on that explanation?
I'll reserve.
Okay. Commissioner Lemkohl?
Yeah, is there any reason why we can't apply for more money than what we're doing? This seems like a rather small amount. Is it because the three companies don't have enough time to be able to get all these done? Or is it that, that the state's just not allowing us to build a bid on more money?
Well, with the exception of the year, the, the one year that the state stole a bunch of money on the remonumentation program.
They did, I agree.
With the exception of that, the resources that are available in each county are based on three different funding mechanisms, but they're all driven by recording fees. And obviously, Wayne County has a lot more recording fees than Grand Traverse County does.
Well, we had a lot of recording fees for, when the real estate market was really high and we still didn't get more money.
Right. It wasn't appreciably more than we're getting now, maybe 30%, 20% or something like that? I don't know. It's also, the program also was centered on area. So like Marquette County was getting a pretty good chunk of money, because it's a huge county and they probably got five times the corners we do. It's the biggest county east of the Mississippi in the United States. So, you know, area-wise, it's quite large. And then the other funding source was based on population. So that's how Wayne County was getting a bunch of money. There was a time we could apply for the third source of funding, they take money out of that, where you can, you could have added, you could have added money into the remon program and got that money back on a grant the following year. So each county was kind of funding one year of the grant program. And some of the counties did that. And I had, maybe 10 years ago or 12 years ago, brought that in front of the commissioners and said, you know, look, if you put $100,000 in, you're going to get an extra $100,000 back next year over our normal funding amount. And it never happened. So.
Okay. Commissioner Willock?
Well, I was a little confused when I read this resolution, because we've been 20 years into this program, we've got to be getting pretty close to it. And, and the resolution says that the administrator be authorized to sign the request for 40% startup payment. So don't we annually get this money and then we use it? Or are we, do we have to request this 40% and have the money and then start the work and then bill them back for the rest of it?
Right. That's exactly what happens. You have to apply to the state to get approval of your work plan. And then once they approve your work plan, there's a percentage you can get the startup money. Typically, the startup money is in the county's hands before the county disperses any funds. Most years, I don't think the county gets a bill from us three surveyors till about the last week in December. So most years, the county's sitting on that money, sitting on that money for about six months before we send them a bill. I'm going to try to get down a little earlier this year, but...
I was just confused by the startup payment terminology, because we're 20 years into this program.
Every year it's that way. For that year's plan.
Commissioner Richardson?
I'd like to make a motion to accept and authorize the chairman to sign the 2012 remonumentation grant, the amount of $51,126. And be it further resolved that the remonumentation grant administrator be authorized to sign the request for 40% startup payment of the grant.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve. That would be item number 27.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lemkohl?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
No.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Motion passes with one nay. We now go to item number 28. Kind of, is there more we need to talk about on that?
I make a motion to approve the service contracts.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Fleece. Discussion? Commissioner Willock?
It's strictly a typo, but in the resolution, it should be Thosling Zubeck down at the bottom. There's, there's no G on the front of it. And it's pretty much typical, you split the 34 corners we're going to do between the three companies, correct, Bob?
Absolutely, yeah. They were selected when they initially drafted a model plan, got approved by the state. We did a QBS, most qualified firms. I was not involved in that process. It was done by it, then the deputy, deputy administrator and a committee, Matt McQuillan, I think, was at the time. And a committee was put together, commissioners, and they selected the three most qualified. And I don't think that's changed. I think they're still the most three qualified firms.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve item number 28.
Larry?
Yes?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We have to have with the change of the name.
Of the God.
With the typo.
All right. With that typo.
Yeah.
All right. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
No.
No? That's correct, no. Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemkohl?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Motion passes with one nay. Thank you for coming, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks for taking the time out of your schedule. We go to item number 29, and that was pulled by Commissioner Gilman, you have the floor.
Well, nice thing about, I mean, there are grants that, and this, this last issue, for example, though we call it a grant, it's actually some, it's monies that are set aside specifically for this, and it comes out of the activity that it, that it surrounds, fees collected and in titles and whatnot. But this, the Housing Authority Grant, this is more like a lottery. It's taxpayer-funded lottery. Some people are going to advantage from it. And we're just going to, we're going to take taxpayer money from the pocket of taxpayers and we're going to redistribute it based on some criteria to people who, who may or may not be able to afford the homes that they're getting money for. And, you know, you can call it, you can say that, you, you might disagree with it, but there's a better way to handle it. Either you agree with this type of activity or you don't agree with this type of activity. I call it redistribution. I think it's a, it's a, it's a core and fundamental sickness that we have in this country as it is. And I'm willing to put a stop to it and put, and take our hand and pull it back at this point, because I don't think it advances our community at all. I don't think it serves the general interest of the taxpayers at all. So I disagree with it.
We don't have a motion yet due.
We do not.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Willock?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the accepted grant funding for two homebuyer purchase rehabilitation grants from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, one for $250,000 for the city of Traverse City, and a second one for $195,000 to be distributed in the village of Kingsley and the village in Fife Lake.
All right. Is there support by Commissioner Richardson? Commissioner Willock, discussion?
Well, you know, we, we've talked about this on multiple occasions, about it being redistribution or whatever. One of the things that governmental entities have the ability to do is provide service to its citizens. And to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time that the state of Michigan has ever made any funding available to help us with people, allow us to help people in the villages and out of the core community of the city of Traverse City for any sort of purchase assistance or rehabilitation on their home, to keep people in their homes.
Okay. Commissioner Gilman?
I think, I think everybody should have a shrubbery.
Have a what?
A shrubbery.
A shrubbery! I mean, you know, I mean, I think it's, I think it makes, makes houses look nice. And, and there are some people that can't afford to buy shrubberies.
A chicken in the pot in a fade drive.
And by golly, by golly, homeowners should be entitled to a shrubbery.
Okay.
And I think I've made my point.
All right. Commissioner Fleece? I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
A shrubbery!
Commissioner Gilman, have you spoke to Commissioner Henchel about this, that sounds like it may be a communist plot?
I'm sorry, I just found that very funny.
I want a hearing.
All right. I want a hearing. Okay, any other comments on the motion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gilman?
No.
Willock?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
No.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemkohl?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Passes with two nays. All right, now we go to item number 31. Commissioner Gilman, you pulled that, you have the floor.
Just pull it because I disagree with it.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
So be it.
Commissioner Lemkohl?
Yep.
So you moved to approve the...
Approve the resolution for the...
Number 31 as presented. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleece. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Willock?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Maxbauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemkohl?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
No.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Motion passes with one nay. All right, that concludes the consent calendar items that were pulled, along with my name tag. And we will move on to the administrators' report. Dean?
First item are a number of appointments to the city representative to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This is presented as the first item in the section. They're recommending Scott Joseph as the city at-large representative for the three-year term ending 12/31/14, and Mr. Joseph will fill the position previously held by Doug Donaldson.
Okay, is there a motion? Commissioner Richardson?
Support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Maxbauer to accept the appointments as presented. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. Okay. Claims summary, Dean, you want to...
So that covered both?
Yeah. Yep.
No, that didn't cover the...
There was, there was the appointment to the Resource Recovery Council. I think we should have two separate motions.
Okay, you want to clarify that?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the appointment of Gene Blood as the township representative to the Resource Recovery Council.
Support.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Willock, seconded by Commissioner Maxbauer to approve the Township Association recommendation for Gene Blood for the Resource Recovery Council. So we'll make that distinction on the first, on the previous motion. It was for the first one. So we'll do that clarification. So is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. All right. All right, claims.
Second item is our claims summary for the month of February 2012. The total claims that I need approval on are $6,767,542.72.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Willock, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the claims amount as presented for payment. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, we should do a roll call on claims. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Maxbauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Lemkohl?
Yep.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Willock.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece.
Yes.
Chairman Inman.
Yes, motion passes. And then we have an update on the county administrator's search process. Dean, or Jen?
I'm going to hand that off to our Human Resources Director, Jen Seaman.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a verbal update. We received 71 candidates for the county administrator position. Forty-four percent were from outside the state of Michigan, and 25 percent were in the private sector. All of those resumes at the commissioners' requests have been emailed to you. If you didn't get them, just let me know. They were large files. I've heard from a few of you, and I believe Chairman Inman has asked me to put on the agenda for March resource management--
Right.
--and administration regarding next, a discussion on what you would like to do for next steps.
And she has, in her recommendation, put the top nine for recommendation for interviews, and then commissioners have an opportunity to look at those nine and the other ones that were in the packet, and make it, and by board approval, make changes if so necessary. And then the second part would be, because it would give us a couple of weeks to go through those, and for those that don't, that couldn't get it by email, we would have a printed copy here at the administration office. You can stop in and go through those if you'd like, which I've already done. And then the second issue was, what process would you like to use moving forward? You know, do you want to have a similar process that we had with our previous county administrator, where we brought him, him or her and their spouse in, and they had a half-day with department heads in terms of just going around and getting themselves introduced, and the other half of the day was kind of a community introduction, they could just introduce themselves for a few minutes to community leaders at a setting, could be the boardroom, or it could be a different setting. And then, and then we, and then we spent the next two days, Sonny might have to help me in my memory on that one, I think we interviewed four on one and three on the other or something. And then at the end of the second day, the board was given a tally sheet, and we each kind of wrote down which ones we thought were the first, second, third, fourth, fifth choices, and the tally came up, Dennis was number one unanimously among all nine commissioners. So we offered the position to him that evening, but, so I want you to think about what process you think might work for the commission moving forward. So I suggested that Jen, we might want to put that on the RMA agenda, giving you opportunity to review the applicants and giving some thought as to what process you'd like to move forward with, so we can, we can get a hold of the candidates and get them in for, she's going to bring out, she's going to, at the RMA meeting, she'll give out some suggested dates in April that we can look at for that, for a process that the board might want to go through. Any questions on that update?
All right.
Is there a reason we have to wait till April for the interviews?
Well, if we do, if we look at, if we make a decision in March RMA, that's, you only have short notice to get somebody up here and--
We're only a month away.
That was the only thing, we were looking at the first, first week in April, is one of the three dates that we're looking at, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And then that would give us, you know, I think that would be enough notice, I think, two weeks to have those people adjust their schedule.
Commissioner Richardson?
First of all, Jen, thank you for providing those all electronically. It's obviously a lot of work to go through them all, but it's what I've been spending my evenings already doing. I had a question about the process. Was the next step, we were going to do like either telephone or Skype interviews, or?
I don't believe the board approved that as the next step. That's where I'm looking for guidance, whatever you guys would like to do as the next step, whether you want to do Skype, or whether you want to bring them in in person. I'm just--
I could help refresh the discussion that we had.
Please.
My recollection was that we directed Jen to do with the assistance of Ross, he had a scoring model that we looked at and that we agreed to in terms of general criteria, and she went through that, and we, the board directed her to bring back no, no, no less than 10, I believe, or something like that, no more than 15, somewhere in that range. And if necessary, we were going to, the board was going to look at those applicants and narrow them down no less than five, no more than 10. That was just kind of the guide that we had at that time, but it was real flexible, and so when she brought back the nine recommended, I thought that, I felt that was in the general direction of what we told her to do.
Well, and the score sheet really made a distinction about that nine, too.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, you know, from the beginning of this process, I've had issues with the scoring system and the way points are assigned, and I'm not saying, you know, it's necessarily a bad thing, but in what I've been reviewing, there are already candidates outside those top nine that I would like to consider, and I'm only one of nine.
I have some as well.
And so suddenly now we're looking at your nine from the scoring, plus anywhere from five, six, seven, eight more, and I don't think we want to bring that many in in person. I don't think we want to pay the transportation on that many to come here. So again, we could, you know, obviously, you know, we'll talk about it on March 14th at RMA, but maybe, maybe what we need to think about is some way to take that number and winnow it down to a more manageable number, like the five to 10 that was offered originally.
Yeah, and I would agree, the scoring system isn't perfect whatsoever. I'll tell you, don't use that on every job opening at all. That was just a, it's not perfect. It isn't, and someone may grade someone differently than I did, absolutely. So it's meant to be as a guide and for you guys to look at, consider.
Commissioner Max Bauer.
And I just want to say, again, Jen, thank you for giving us a starting point. It really is an excellent starting point. But I want the opportunity to talk to Jen, because I have reviewed, you know, the nine recommendations, her top nine, and I've got some questions about one of those candidates as to why--
Yeah, so does--
That, okay, so I just want an opportunity to sit down with Jen and just say, okay, why didn't we look at this?
So I think what we should be prepared for is two things. One is if you, if you feel strongly about one of the applicants that aren't in the top tier, then just bring that to the commission in terms of discussion, and we can all agree or disagree to--
I just need some answers to some questions I have, and she, I'm sure she has them.
You can meet with her on why she puts someone in the top tier in terms of points.
Go ahead.
So I'm concerned about the comment you made about paying for transportation here. I don't think we're paying for transportation here for any of our candidates, are we?
I think last time we did.
But I don't think we've decided that?
No, we have not decided that.
So, and I would be opposed to paying for anybody to be transported, for transportation here.
I think we covered the hotel expense.
I think it's stay at Larry's house.
Yeah.
Well, nobody else ever does. That's a good point, honestly, but I think my point from that was that maybe we need to take, you know, we need two more cuts. We need to, we need to cut the 71 down to a more manageable number, but then take that number down to the five or seven or eight that we really want to talk--
Right, and that was the goal, that was the original goal we had.
But I still think we need to talk about--
But hopefully we'll have a proposal for RMA on the 14th.
Yeah, so, but we want commissioners to have plenty of time before now in RMA to go through all the applications, have an opportunity to meet with Jen if you feel that's necessary. And a couple of us are going to NACO, so that wipes out like, you know, four days or five days, so, you know--
We have our computers, we can read in our spare time.
So, any of that, yeah. So we thought March, the March RMA would be a good meeting to--
And I may not be here for RMA. So I just want to make that point.
You're welcome to, you're welcome to have staff prepare. Any comments that you'd like to have, and we'll take those, take those under consideration.
Okay, any other questions on that item? Now we'll move on to item number four, and that's the Gomosier.
Scott? Right, we have, since Scott Howard is here, I think I'll turn this over to him, but this was provided electronically, and I did hand out a, the document at the start of the meeting, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, and with that, I'll hand it off to Scott.
Thank you, and while I was watching at home, helping children do homework, I did hear somebody mention a potential closed session. I don't know if it was for this matter or not, you are able to go into closed session if you want. I don't, I'm not asking you to do that, and I don't necessarily see a need to do it, but if you did want to have a closed session discussion about the litigation, you're more than welcome.
It was, it was not for this particular matter, so.
I apologize then.
Is the settlement a fair settlement for the county?
It is, and I think one of the main reasons, well, on a variety of levels it is. I believe that what it does is it keeps intact Judge Rogers' rulings in the case, the underlying validity of the, of the ordinance, and the fact that it is constitutional, but it is not preempted by state statute. So that's item number one, and that's the most important big-picture item for the county. The validity of the system has been upheld.
And it's an agreed settlement.
It is an agreed settlement. Number two, the damage amount for, the damages that were at issue, actually, in this case, those were only, only damages related to East Bay Township, but what we were able to do is negotiate a damage amount that covered all of his previous violations. So what that allows the county or the Board of Public Works not to have to do is go out and work with each individual township and pursue additional misdemeanor counts and additional violations and over and over again. So it kind of wraps it all up in, in one sort of settlement, and it does it in a way that is, I think, financially advantageous to the county.
And my understanding, this has been approved by the Board of Public Works and East Bay Township Board.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Willock.
Scott, I think the other thing that, you know, I read that I was pretty, pretty happy about is the consent judgment also requires the Gomosier bring also, future receptage to the plan.
Yep.
You know, so we're not going to be a year from now having this discussion again.
Absolutely, and--
And if he doesn't, he's in violation of the court order that creates a settlement.
And which is, which is substantial additional penalty to what already exists in the ordinance, so he'd be facing a contempt of court charge, which is that much worse.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, motion, we agree to the settlement.
All right, moved by Commissioner Thomas to approve the settlement as presented, supported by Commissioner Richardson. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Richardson.
I mean, was this a bit of a test case, or was this just somebody who just thought he didn't have to follow the--
It was, I think it was somebody who maybe got caught with his hand in the cookie jar and then made a test case out of it. The Hollers Association joined the case in order to challenge whether or not the ordinance was preempted by state statute, so it became, it may have not been his intention to create a test case, but it certainly resulted that way.
Commissioner Gilman.
Just, this is something that must come before this board?
It is, and there's two reasons for that. One is that they, they, for whatever reason, named the county board as part of the, as a named party in the lawsuit, so--
Well, so that, and the resolution of this, then we can't go back and say anything further, is kind of the point, maybe? I mean--
The, the other part of that, they wanted to have the assurance that if they settled with the Board of Public Works, the county board wouldn't do something different than the Board of Public Works. I, you know, I don't know why you would, but that, I guess we're dotting i's and crossing t's.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Since this is a settlement contract, we need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Yes.
Lemko.
Yes.
Henshaw.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yep.
Willock.
Yes, ma'am.
Fleece.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
No.
Chairman Inman.
Yes. Motion passes with one nay. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Does that conclude the administrators' report? All right.
Back to homework, Scott.
Thanks for coming in.
He's got pajamas on.
All right, we, unfinished business, we have three items, and there's two items that the public identified they wanted to speak on, so I guess we'll hear them first, and then we'll take it back to the board. The first one was the Spirit of Traverse City, that would be the train, the city train, and sir, if you could come up and identify yourself and try to keep it within three to five minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm Lee Delancey, and my address is 150 Pine Street, apartment 104, Traverse City, Michigan. And I think the train should be saved, I think it should be put over by the library, because it is a good place to put it, and I think, and I love this, I love that train, and it is a landmark.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We got his name in here. Yes, ma'am, did you want to speak on that item?
My name is Jennifer Isbell, and I'm the editor and publisher of Pet Friends Magazine, which, if you haven't heard of it, it's a regional website and newsletter, and I write about pet events in our community, as well as follow animal state legislation, and try to help the local rescue groups and animal shelters adopt out pets. I've been following the horse case concerning Daniel Round, and I was disturbed by several aspects of the case, and what I gave to the clerk was some questions and statements that I had for you. I have done a FOIA through the Sheriff's Department to find out some of the information, but I wanted to get it on record that if I can't find out some of that information, that hopefully you can help me, or maybe you have some of the same questions that I do. I'm not sure if you want me to go through this during my three to five minutes.
If we've got it in writing, you'll need to go through it.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Should we talk about the train first?
Well--
Because that's the order of business, and then when we're done with that one--
I understand that, and--
They're separate--
Yeah, I misunderstood, you wanted to talk about the, the train, too, so.
Oh, okay.
So, are you, are you concluding your comments on the--
Um, if you, yeah, if you don't need me to read what I've already given you, I just didn't know if I should do that for, you know, the public to hear it, or--
Well, if we haven't written words out.
Okay, the only closing comment I have is, can I make a request to get answers to those questions, like within a time period?
You can prepare in writing to administration, and we're glad to get back to you on this.
Okay, thank you.
On the third floor.
Well, I think she has it in writing, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, that's, yeah.
Follow up with me if you have any--
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any, let's get back to the train, Spirit of Traverse City. Any member of the public wish to speak on that item? Yes.
My name's Andy Merrick, 2875 East Railroad Avenue. I sent a email to all of the commissioners that have email, and my, my only concern is the county taking on the expense of a train. I don't disagree with the county purchasing the train, if they could, or accepting a train from the city. If a not-for-profit group wanted to lease the train and the land that the train ran on, and also incur the expense, if the community wants to keep the train, the supporters of the train could pay for that versus the taxpayers at large, is my only suggestion or issue that may sway what the board has to say on the train.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So staying with the train issue, anyone else want to speak on behalf of that from the public? All right, that is an item that was originally brought up by Commissioner Fleece, and apparently it was brought to the attention of the Parks and Rock Commission, and then they have in their minutes in your packet, their, their recommendation. But Commissioner Fleece, you have the floor on this.
Thank you. I've had a lot of calls from citizens in Grand Traverse County, even outside of Grand Traverse County, regarding the Spirit of Traverse City. I've had a lot of calls from groups that have formed, that would be willing to volunteer moving the train. For example, the Veterans Coalition has expressed an interest. Jack O'Malley has a group of interested citizens, and there's, there's other ones that are very interested in the train remaining in Traverse City or Grand Traverse County. I did receive a call the other day from a private enterprise on the bay that is interested in perhaps putting a bid in on the train and be able to continue to operate it, much like it has been on the waterfront, and I referred him to Ben Vivas, the city manager, for the bid information. But my thought was, putting it on the agenda here is, my personal feelings is, I'd like to see the train remain too, but I'm not willing to spend taxpayer dollars running it or owning it. My thought was, if we could find a group that would step forward before April 5th with a business plan or a plan of some kind that seemed feasible, that perhaps to help that group along, we, the commissioners, could accept the train from Traverse City at no cost, and like I said, if the groups got together, for example, I could envision the Veterans Coalition out there, they have a large number in their group, and I've talked And I've talked with some of them and it wouldn't take them long to move that and the rest of the citizen groups that are interested. But I didn't know what the feelings were of the rest of the commissioners. And what I'd like to do is have everybody think about it and perhaps at our M&amp;A meeting, put it on the agenda again and this will buy you some time maybe to make some calls, talk to some people. And I'd like to see what everybody thinks. You know, maybe I'm all wet.
Commissioner Henshaw?
I'm kind of disgusted. This totally missed opportunity for leadership and bringing the community together that the Parks Department has totally missed. I'm just reading the paragraph they wrote, they basically gave the subject lip service. But, you know, they say, you know, based on relocation of equipment, potential safety and liability issues. We have, we own a pool, a 12-foot deep pool with a diving board and they're worried about liability issues? I bet more people have been hurt on that than ever riding that train. You know, maintenance costs and limitations of county property. We have tracts of land that are hardly touched by citizens and those tracts of land sit there not paying taxes because it's county land and therefore we're all paying for this park that three people use a year or maybe somebody's farming for absolutely no expense whatsoever, giving them an unfair advantage in the farming market. We have property, okay? Liability is not, we have insurance for liability issues and we already have a pool. You know, it just, it looks to me like they really gave a lip service and they did not take a serious look at the possibilities of building community and just like Commissioner Fleece said, get a hold of some of these groups that are interested in it and show us some leadership. Why do we have a Parks Commission if not to build community? Isn't that what they say they do?
Well, I have an answer to that. Number one, this is not our train, it's the city's train, okay? And the Parks Department looked at whether this would fit within the structure of the all the parks that they have and whether it would be feasible to put in and be economically feasible to operate. And the whole premise behind the train was it was centered in the most populated area of our tourism downtown where people are attracted to the beaches, the marina, the cherry festival. And that's where people go and the families go to enjoy when they come up here. The people that use the Civic Center, in my opinion, are the people that come out of town, they use the ball diamonds and those kinds of things. And there's a little kids thing, Cove there, but, you know, if they say they got to take out a ball diamond to put the tracts in, if we can't attract the tourists to come into the Civic Center to use the train and to get some kind of, you know, offsetting expense off of it when we're in a downward revenue trend budget issue, then I would say, you know, it's not, you know, sure, we would like to have the train in our community and have someone step up and take it over and have the ability for the public to use it and the tourists to use it. But they're saying that the Civic Center is not a, you know, is not a proper area to have, to have the tourists come because they're not going to, they're not going to leave downtown, go down to the Civic Center and then go try to park back downtown again. I mean, I can see where they're coming from on this issue, but, I mean, that's where I'm reading it from, but I don't sit on the Parks, but that'd be my opinion is how do you put it there, get people interested in coming down and then going back to the center of tourism? But I guess we'll start right down the road. Who had their hand up first? Commissioner Gillman?
Well, you know, just like Commissioner Fleece said, I mean, if somebody wants to come forward with a plan, I've got an open mind about it. I definitely agree, we can't put ourselves in a position where we're spending any extra money on something like this. I'd rather it be a museum piece. But, I mean, heck, I mean, we do have, we do have tracts of land that are open. I mean, we got the soccer fields that could go round and round and the kids who aren't playing could certainly go round and round if somebody had a plan and wanted to put forward the effort, the money. We've got a new, a new set of, we've got, we've got new flatlands, we could call it the Mud Flat Rail River Train or something. You know?
With a river crossing.
With, there you go. If somebody were to come forward with a plan and put, put a plan together and show that the money could be there to do it. But I think we're, we're spending a lot of time on this and if somebody wants to bring it forward to the commission, I think that's great, but otherwise we need to move on.
Okay. Then we'll go to Richardson and then Fleece.
I've been rereading the memo here, which came from the Parks and Rec Commission. I was actually at that meeting and I didn't, I didn't remember that they said to any county park, I mean, that may be what the actual motion was.
It was.
But the actual discussion was about whether it would go in the Civic Center or not. And I think there was general consensus, well, obviously consensus by the Parks and Rec Commission because they voted nine to one, that they didn't think it was a good fit for the park and obviously their money concerns. Personally, if somebody had an idea of, you know, how to fund the move and made another proposal, I think we should consider that, but short of that, I'm not, I'm not sure why we would try to inject ourselves into it. And since that is actually my neighborhood and I have heard from a number of the neighbors, the neighbors that I have heard from are pretty much overwhelmingly opposed to having the train installed into the Civic Center and their concerns are not about the cost. So, so again, if there's, you know, if there's another proposal or something, yeah, we'll work something out, that'd be great.
Okay. Now it's Commissioner Fleece and then Commissioner Max Bar.
You know, I forgot when I first started talking, but Henshaw reminded me because I had written here how disappointed I was with the negativity from the Parks and Rec Committee. I have never in my career, with the exception of Man Cass, Commissioner Man Cass, who voted nay, seen such negativity for a public body in my life. If this commission operated like the Parks and Rec, in my opinion, this county would be in deep doo-doo. I agree 100% with Commissioner Henshaw and with all the property we have, I'm sure that somebody, an entrepreneur group, could certainly put something together with that train. And my idea is we'd be merely the conveyance because we're a public body to transfer it from the city to us and we'll give it to somebody.
Right. Yeah. Commissioner Max Bar and then Lemko.
Well, we at the Parks Board, first of all, I want to remind all the commissioners of the process if you disagree with the Parks Board. The process is three commissioners must agree in writing that you disagree with the opinion of the Parks Board in order to bring it in front of the county board for a vote. And those are in the Parks Board rules that the county board approved. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So if you do want to bring it back, Commissioner Fleece, and if you do, I would be more than happy to add my signature to it because I think any county commissioner who takes a look at Parks Board decisions should, and disagrees with it, should have a right to bring it to the county board for a discussion. We did talk about primarily the Civic Center. And the Parks Director told us in effect that if we put it at the, put the train at the Civic Center, we would have to take out a ball field, dirt would be moved, tracks, I mean, the cost that was given to us in our, in our Parks Board packet were astronomical. It was between, I think, $300,000 and $400,000. I wish I had it in front of me and I should have been prepared and I'm sorry, I'm not. But that really wasn't the primary reason that the Parks Board said no to asking for the train. First of all, there was no ground swell of support. There was one person in the audience, aside from Commissioner Richardson, who happened to be in the audience, but there was only one person who spoke in favor of the county keeping the train. That was, that's hardly a ground swell of support. As Commissioner Richardson said, I too have received numerous emails from people in that neighborhood saying they don't want it at the Civic Center. So at that point, you know, when you stop and take a look at the other county parks that we have, where are we going to put it? Medallie Park? You know, over by Logan's Landing? It's not going to fit there. Hall Park, which this gentleman, one of our, the members of the public suggested, that's a city park. You know, out on our Whitewater property, we've got the acreage there, but that's hardly the place for a train. The Vasa Trailhead? I don't think so. You know, we, the Parks Board simply didn't see a good fit. Now, if you or if any other commissioner feels that there's a good fit in one of our county parks, please come to me and let me know and tell me where it is and tell me why you think it's a good fit. I think, if you want to have that discussion, I think we should. But I don't want you to think that the Parks Board just tossed this aside. I don't think they did.
That was the impression I got. Commissioner Lemko?
Yeah. My concern is, is that I think at this point, this is a city issue, not a county issue. This is a city's train, they have to make the determination as to what's going to happen to it. If an organization came to the Parks Recreation and made a proposal as to what they want to do and where they're going to put it, and if it was going to go on a particular park for the county, then it would be the Parks Recreation to be able to do that. I would be adamantly opposed for the county to accept this train at this time, mainly because we've done this before. We received dams for a dollar.
And a swimming pool.
Thank you for reminding us on that one.
And a swimming pool for a dollar. And look where we're at, look what kind of a situation we are. I would strongly encourage an organization or a person or somebody to come forward and make a formal presentation to the city as to how they would like to have this handled. And if we can be a collaborator to work with one of our parks and it works, and the parks thinks that it would work with there, then we could bring that to our, to our board to make that happen. The way we have it right now, we have a lot of, yeah, we got some ideas, we got some thoughts, we got some people that are interested, but it's not to us. It should be the city commission that they want to do something there and then if they want to collaborate with the Parks Recreation for the county, then they should take it to the Parks Recreation with that proposal.
I agree. Commissioner Willock?
Well, I guess probably, you know, to back up a little bit, the reason it was on the Parks and Recreation Commission's agenda last week was the fact that I meet with, met with Pete Doran on two different occasions and talked to Jason on multiple, on multiple occasions to get that on there. But I am very adamant that this board of commissioners does not have the authority to say that that's going at the Civic Center. That's what we have a Parks and Recreation Commission for. You know, and over the last couple of years, we've made some pretty strong statements to the Parks and Recreation Commission overturning decisions they've made and telling them they don't know what they're doing or whatever. If this commission truly believes that they have a better handle on what the recreational needs and of this community are than our Parks and Recreation Commission, we probably should get rid of the Parks and Recreation Commission. You know, I've received two dozen emails with numbers and dollar amounts of all different ranges of what it would cost to move this thing. But the fact is, if our Parks and Recreation Commission does not support putting it on a county park, then the discussion's over.
Okay. Who else wants to speak on this, Eric? Commissioner Thomas?
Just one thing, I'd like to see the train stay here somehow.
I would too.
It's a wonderful tourist attraction, but it's got to be close to downtown.
That's what I see.
It's a city problem. But if it comes, if it ends up with us, I'm not in favor of spending one taxpayer dollar on it, so...
Any other comments before we leave it? Okay. We'll conclude with that. Next item is the horse update. And I apologize, I thought I was calling you up on the train issue. Okay. And just to clarify through, Mr. Cooney, the member of the public, if she chooses to read the statement, she's allowed to read the statement, otherwise we can just accept it and we can probably provide your office with a copy of it because it mainly pertains to questions of the procedure and the investigation, those kinds of things. We can refer this to you?
Either way.
Okay. Is that acceptable, ma'am? Okay. All right. Okay. Commissioner Fleece, you have the floor on that item?
You know, I've been a horse owner, well, continuously for the last 43 years. And I was a horse owner and an animal owner prior to that when I was at home as a child. It's a horrible way to have to die when you starve to death. And you have to remember, they're mammals, just like you are. You're a Homo sapien, but you're still a mammal. And if somebody puts you into jail and just wouldn't turn the key to open the door so you could get the food that was right outside, it's a horrible way to have to die. Somebody is responsible for that, in my opinion. And I think the county commission certainly has a role in this because I've read the reports. I think we need to take some corrective action. I think we need to look at it further. And rather than discuss it tonight, I'd like to put it on the public health and safety agenda for next week. But when somebody calls a department of the county, I don't care what department, and they're asking for help and no help is forthcoming and an animal or a human dies as a result of that, I think we need to correct that situation and I think it can be corrected fairly easy. It's going to cost a couple bucks, but we need to make sure this does not happen again. Perhaps food for thought next week, perhaps the animal control should be under the auspices of the Sheriff's Department. I think, in my personal opinion, it'd be more fitting and I remember when it used to be there. Why it's under the Health Department, I don't know. But I'd like the commissioners to think about that and I'd ask that it be put on the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting for next week. And as far as the Jennifer that spoke earlier tonight, I think the place you need to be is I believe Friday is sentencing for that individual responsible for this crime. And I think you and perhaps your friends need to address the court prior to the sentencing.
Does the judge allow a public comment?
Well, it's not, it's, yeah, they'll ask for comment and you can generally address the court, it's up to the judge, but...
Better off sending a letter to the judge, probably. Yeah. They may allow you to address the court, but probably not. You'd be better off giving them a letter.
I'd send a letter.
Okay. Good. All right.
Well, today is, tonight's Wednesday night, you'd have to be expedient. I'd suggest that you take the letter or letters right over to the court tomorrow and ask that they be given to the appropriate judge.
Okay. All right. Just a quick question of Bob Cooney with regard to what the county commission can and can't do. Obviously, this was a issue, unfortunate situation that my understanding was turned over to the prosecutor's office or was an investigation done by the prosecutor's office and action has been taking, has been taken by the prosecution's office and now is going forward to, you know, some kind of decision by a judge or a trial or whatever. So, so given that fact, the only role, I guess, the county commission could play in terms of a discussion on an agenda item would be the issue of combining the two offices with the Sheriff's Department or not. I mean, where are the boundaries? Because obviously the commission cannot interfere or do anything different than what's been referred to your office.
Yeah, I think the only discussion that Commissioner Fleece is talking about is whether animal control is adequately funded or given adequate direction on how it should treat these cases and whether it's more appropriately part of the sheriff's office rather than the Health Department.
Okay. So we'll add that to RMA. Okay?
No.
Public health and safety.
Did you say public health and safety?
Public health and safety.
Public Health and Safety.
Bring Fred Kiesler.
You got that, Dean? Public Health and Safety, okay.
But, but you know, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It's no different than if we don't fund the sheriff appropriately, and we have a serious FBI or a fatal, but no cops come. Because there aren't any cops. Because the county board didn't fund, and that's what we need to talk about next week.
Yeah, okay.
Dean?
Commissioner Hensel.
When we talk about that issue, could you bring some comparison with other counties? What, how they've structured their animal control versus what we do? And how much they fund similar, similar sized and geographic counties?
I, I will try to do that. I don't know if there's enough time. Is the committee meeting next week?
It's going to be the next Wednesday.
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
You don't think starvation is a bad idea?
Is there any other comment by commissioners on that particular item? And that, that we'll just refer that issue regarding jurisdiction? And what other counties are doing on that spot to public safety? Okay. We will move on to road commission. Commissioner Fleech, you added that to the agenda. You have the floor.
As the chairman and I have discussed in the past about the county board taking over the road commission, I'm assigned to the Michigan Northern County Association, which I was at a couple Mondays ago. And we had probably twenty-five to twenty-eight commissioners from all different counties there, from Midland North to the bridge. And this topic came up, and we discussed it quite at length. And finally, the chairman said, I'd like to see a show of hands of the boards that are considering or are going to discuss taking over their road commissions. Would you raise your hands? Not one hand?
I don't blame you.
They went like this?
And then I had a, I believe it was a conversation with Mr. Cooney regarding road commissions. And, and if it wasn't Bob, say so. But another situation for board of commissioners to consider before they would even think about that, and I brought this up at our meeting over there, is when the road commission gets sued because of a fatality or a serious personal injury accident or whatever, they're the ones getting sued. And the pockets are as deep as their insurance or their, their budget. If we take it over, we now assume that liability. And I think our pockets are a little deeper than the road commissions. So I'm certainly not in favor of it, and I wouldn't even consider, you know, the thought of it.
I agree with you. Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Richardson.
Well, since I seem to be the one who started this, I guess I should comment on it. And by the way, the Record Eagle agreed with you.
That was an excellent anecdote.
But, but what I have to say is that, all I, all I said was, you know, we ought to take a look at it. I have started to look into it. I'm a long ways from completing any kind of a study or whatever you want to call it. And certainly, we have a lot more important things on our plate right now, like hiring a new county administrator and so forth. So in that respect, the Record Eagle's comment about, you know, take your time, push this back, whatever, that part I definitely agree with. But I do think it's something we need to look at because there may be, there may be a mechanism to save money. There isn't, there isn't. But, you know, stay tuned for later in the year.
Commissioner Gilman, then Commissioner Lemko.
I think we just need to push for that legislation that allows us to make the road commission an elected body. Make them accountable to the people here so.
Elected by district.
Elected, well, however, however we construct it, I think it needs to happen so that the people actually feel like they're represented. Whereas right now, it's treated more as an authority, which it is, so.
Commissioner Lemko.
Yeah. Personally, I'm against elected road commissioners. I always have been because of the cost to run for an election. It takes the person that can't afford to run an election that might cost them ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
Welcome to the county commission.
You do it every two years.
I know. But, I mean, putting another group of people in that, that thing, I have a real problem with it. I think we're selecting good quality road commissioners. That is our responsibility to continue, to continue doing it. I do have a couple of very big concerns about if we did take over the road commission, and not only just the liability, but also, I don't see us saving them any money. You know, there is no money to be saved on that. They're doing as good a job as they can. The problem is, is the lack of funding for roads. Both from us as county people, and from the state, and from the federal. We are all guilty of not putting enough money into our roads to make sure that they're being taken care of properly. The other thing is, is that if the road commission didn't have enough money to do what it needed to do, would it come back to our general fund that we would have to fund it? I mean, we already did. We did that about four years ago where we put general fund money voluntarily. But if we took them over, would we have to do it after that? I don't know. So, and I think these are, there's a lot of issues that we need to look at before we even start to think about it. I totally agree that we do not get this thing on our agenda until, at least after we get an administrator and get them, get their foot, feet wet before they do it.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, on a totally separate discussion about the road commission, I would publicly like to announce, and I told Mary very clearly yesterday, and I've called into all of the road commissioners, I oppose their implementation of the seasonal frost laws that go into effect at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. There is certainly not enough frost in the ground to restrict all of our truck traffic to fifty percent capacity and thirty-five mile an hour. And, you know, they are implementing eight o'clock tomorrow morning on all county roads that are not approved for Class A traffic, a seasonal frost law. And we have not had enough frost this winter to even consider doing this. And for the next six weeks probably, or at least, you know, at least three or four weeks, all of our truck traffic are, you know, technically school buses, garbage trucks, everything. Fifty percent capacity, thirty-five mile an hour maximum. And, and an overload ticket is a dollar a pound. So if you're ten thousand pounds overloaded, it's a buck a pound.
So does the county road commission have the authority to do that?
Yes, they do.
They are the only ones that have the authority.
And you got, well, I'm not even going to go there.
The state puts it out, but the road commissions have to apply it in their community.
We might want to have Bob look into that. I, I, that's got to be a, to me, that seems to be.
Oh, no, it's the way it is.
No, that's not nearly, Larry. Every, every.
Every road commission does that? I thought that, that was mandated by the Department of State.
Nope.
State Transportation. Okay, all right.
And every county is different.
Commissioner Fleech, then Commissioner Hensel. Commissioner Fleech, you have the floor.
I have to respond to Ross. You know, I, I'm glad you brought that to my attention, that the Record Eagle did agree with me because they don't very often. But number two, it also reminded me of something. Five commissioners over there said, I said, well, we're not considering it. Oh, yes, you are. We saw Commissioner Richardson on TV saying. Ross, I just want you to know you're a TV star doll.
All right, anybody else want to speak on that? Commissioner Hensel.
I, I think, you know, with the topic, it has to be noted, the number of states out of the fifty United States that have road commissions. They don't know the number?
It's one.
One. How does every other state, you know, I know we're looking at it now and saying, impossible, we've got too much on our plate. But really, look at it. We're the only state that has them. And Ross, for once, I agree with you. It's worth looking at. I'm not going to say do it.
I, I don't want to have the whole discussion here because obviously, there's a whole lot more work that has to be done.
I'm not ruling it out, that's all I'm saying.
But I would point out that the city of Traverse City has a streets department and does not have a whole separate commission to run their streets department. They're able to make those decisions, you know, without the benefit of a paid board sitting in judgment.
Well, the only thing I would agree to is that the Department of State Transportation take over the county road commissions, regionalize them, and they manage the whole road system.
Yep.
It makes no sense for the, for all the counties in the state of Michigan have a different component.
And watch your dollars go to southeast Michigan. I don't think so.
That's the problem.
Maybe we'll get used to gravel.
Eric, now that we've.
Oh, I don't know if I'm that.
Now that we've beaten this subject together.
Okay, does that conclude that topic?
I hope so.
There's no diversity on this board at all, is there?
None.
Good old boys.
All right. No other unfinished business on our agenda. We are going into new business. We just got a motion to have Mr. Thomas, Commissioner Thomas, be the Assistant Commissioner Gilman in the May, in the March twenty-seventh claims accounts.
Go move.
Move by Richardson, seconded by Gilman.
No, either way.
Either way. Moved by Gilman, seconded by Richardson. That's good.
I'm just a traffic guy here.
Guys, they're so fast.
You two agree?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With no other, no other new business, we go into second public comment. Any member of the public wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Noel McNeil, two eight seven five East Railroad Avenue, Interlock in Michigan. I did law enforcement with the National Park Service for two and a half years. And one of the things that really affected me was the ability to trust your partner and to not question his, if he's primary, to not question his decisions. It kind of frustrates me when I hear the public questioning law enforcement decisions. And as tragic as it is to have a horse die or an animal die, I heard a lot of backlash at the, the animal control people for doing their job. It frustrates me because, like you guys have said, perhaps they aren't getting funded appropriately. And maybe that's why these situations have come up. So I just would like the, the public to be a little bit more understanding and not necessarily go after our public figures. If there's a question that they have, feel free to ask it. But law enforcement does their job to the best of their ability, and sometimes they're not exactly funded the way they need to be. We certainly shouldn't question every little detail that they, they, every little thing that they've done. But there are things that, that need to be questioned, things like budgets and, and issues of that nature. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public comment. We will move on to Commissioner, committee reports. Commissioner Max Bauer and then Commissioner Lemko.
A couple of items. I would like to let everybody know that the Commission on Aging Executive Committee has directed Georgia Durga to go ahead with seeking bids for some office renovations. I would remind you all that the office renovations were approved by this board and the Commission on Aging Board in the two thousand twelve budget. The cap on that expense is fifty thousand dollars. And I want everyone to understand that the reason for those renovations are, we want to make the office ADA compliant. We want to improve employee safety. Right now, there's only one exit from that particular office. And we want to ensure client confidentiality. Right now, when employees are speaking with clients on the phone, anyone who is standing there in the, in the room can hear. And much of this information is confidential information, income information, health information. And I, I think it's going to be money well spent. And I will tell you that we are going to try to do this as inexpensively as possible. And I thank you all for your support during the budget hearings for this renovation.
I could rent you an empty Health Department building.
I don't think we can afford that one. I will not be here for the Public Health and Safety meeting. I will be on vacation on that day. And the other item, the last one I have, is when we approved the two thousand twelve budget, we figured in to the two thousand twelve budget furlough days for employees. And those furlough days have not been negotiated. We haven't discussed it. If nothing is done, and we're at the end of February, granted, we have ten months to go, but negotiations generally take an inordinate amount of time. We're looking for county administrators. I think this board needs to start taking a look at how we're going to plug that hole. Because if we don't do anything, it's a hole. And I thought I would request that we add that on to our Ways and Means Agenda for Discussion in March.
All right.
And that's it.
Yeah, we can do that. I did have a preliminary discussion with Dean Bot on that issue. And the fact that we did not fund the, the amount of our fund balance that we projected from last year, a substantial portion due to the vacant, you know, just, just the filling of vacancies. Dean is going to look into it, but he feels pretty confident that, at least for next year's budget, there'll probably be a similar picture where we can absorb that issue. But he, he'll look into that more and report.
But I think we still have to adjust the budget.
May not. We may not have.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to have him look at that at Ways and Means.
I was glad that Commissioner Max Bauer brought that up. And Commissioner Richardson had also asked in regards to the, you know, our health insurance and moving to a health reimbursement arrangement. You know, we, we do need, it's never too early to take a look at the budget that we have in place. And I will have a, I will do that for, for Ways and Means in March.
Okay. All right, good. We have Commissioner Lemko, and then Commissioner Wheelock.
Okay, there's a few things that I got on my list from the Garfield Township. One is, is that they approved a four percent pilot program for seventy-two units on the corner of Silver Lake and, or Long Lake Road and Zimmerman Road. And, and this is, twenty-six of those units will be for special needs people. The reason I bring this up is that also affects our taxes when they, when they allow that. But it's also one of those things that they have established nine pilots since two thousand and seven. And before that, they had only five. There's fourteen pilots, and they're looking at what kind of an impact that's had on our community and whether or not they can afford to do anymore. I do commend them for doing it because there is a huge need for special needs, but also for the working people to be able to have affordable housing. And these, these departments will, will have that. And so I commend Garfield Township for doing that. But they're also looking at how it's affecting all of us when they start doing the pilot program. They did, they did give their planning department approval to go forward with going after a trust fund grant for the Buffalo Trail, which is a trail going through the YMCA from the Commons all the way up through, all the way up to the YMCA property. So that'll be kind of an interesting time, or interesting grant to go after. They also said that they would be interested in looking at a grant to see whether or not they could purchase the Logan's Landing property, which is the Modality Park, and whether, and turn that all into parkland. So they're looking at that. They also made a transfer of land from the Grand Traverse Commons property to the Greenspire Schools. And they transferred some acreage there for, a small part of the acreage, and also received acreage to add to the parkland. So it was a win-win situation for everybody. And it's nice to see everybody working together. The other thing I have to say is that the, on March fifth, the centralized intake for abuse and neglect will implement a one eight hundred number for the state of Michigan. So anybody that has an abuse claim or neglect claim for anywhere from the vulnerable children to adults will be directed to call the eight hundred number for the state of Michigan. And, and they, the, the number will be staffed about twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But they will then delegate to the proper authority within the counties of where that authority goes, or where that abuse is, and then it'll take care of it. But you will not be able to call the DHS office anymore for abuse or neglect. You will have to call the eight hundred number. That number has not been released yet. They don't want to do it until the fifth of, of March. And they will be putting that number out at that time.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock, you have the floor. Commissioner Weelock, you have a report?
Well, I guess what I have is, I had a couple of questions for Chris. She just talked about the Commission on Aging and the remodel, possible renovation of that building. That is a county building, and none of this renovation has went through the Capital Improvement Committee, and I'm wondering, are we going to see these plans or anything before they renovate our building?
Yes.
As long as the answer is yes. If not, I'm concerned.
That was, that was easy. Yes.
That's a good question. I thought of that. Okay, any other Commissioner reports? Hearing none, going on to notices. Yes. Commissioner Flea, do you have something?
Today, Sonny Weelock is 14 years old. Because he happens to be a leap year baby.
Yeah.
And this is his 14th birthday today.
Tell us more.
Which, if my arithmetic's correct, makes him about 56, but I think we probably ought to sing him happy birthday. Before we can again.
I think we can skip the thing, the, the singing of happy birthday, but Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we go into closed session to discuss Carlson versus Jetter.
Before we do that, anybody else have any other notices?
Are you going to let him rule on that, Mr. Chairman? Are you running this meeting?
You can always burst into song.
Are we all, are we all done with notices? Are we all done with notices?
Yes.
All right. And we have a motion on the floor to go in the
They had, they had a lady on TV this morning who was 25.
All right. You're over. Okay. Now we have a motion.
Motion to go to closed session to review Carlson versus Jetter in litigation.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All right. Second by Commissioner Thomas.
And I do understand that there is possibility that we will make decision when we come out.
Yeah, possibility.
For the, for the public.
Commissioner Weelock?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Limko?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Chairman and members?
Yes. Okay. We're going in the supper room, and we'll come back
Large training room.
Happy birthday, old man.
I thought I might have to say that.
I do. I was your last name.
Please, really.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah.
That was okay.
There was a time when my
That was my good doctor.
Really?
Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah. That was okay. There was a time when my That was my good doctor. Really? Yeah.
Move by Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fleas to come out of closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. All right, we're in open session. We're holding for Commissioner Henshaw.
And where did you say Commissioner Henshaw went?
He's indisposed.
Then I'll be calling on Commissioner Wheelock for the motion. Is that correct?
I don't know. It's Larry Duner or my Duner.
Either way, I'll defer to you. It's your birthday.
You can second it.
Yeah, I'll second. I still think we ought to sing, uh...
Well, we have time. We apparently have a few minutes.
You've done so well tonight.
Don't sing.
Is he still awake at the very last minute?
We either sing Happy Birthday or he's a jolly good fellow.
Just jolly.
Are you ready to sing?
No, we're not singing.
Okay, Commissioner Henshaw, we are in open session. I will call on Commissioner Wheelock.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Grand Harvest County Board of Commissioners reject the mediation office offer in the case of Carlson versus Jetter and direct our attorney to move forward to prepare for trial.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Fleas. Discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote please.
Mr. Wheelock.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Yes.
Max Power.
Yes.
Limb Cool.
Yes.
Henshaw.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Police.
Yes.
Chairman Edmond.
Yes. Passage unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn. So move.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, seconded by Limb Cool. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. All right, we're in open session. We're holding for Commissioner Henshaw.
And where did you say Commissioner Henshaw went?
He's indisposed.
Then I'll be calling on Commissioner Wheelock for the motion. Is that correct?
I don't know. It's Larry Duner or my Duner.
Either way, I'll defer to you. It's your birthday.
You can second it.
Yeah?
You can second.
Yeah, I'll second. I still think we ought to sing, uh...
Well, we have time. We apparently have a few minutes.
You've done so well tonight.
Don't sing.
Is he still waking up?
Yeah.
We either sing Happy Birthday or he's a jolly good fellow.
Just jolly.
Are you ready to sing?
No, we're not singing.
Okay, Commissioner Henshaw, we are in open session. I will call on Commissioner Wheelock.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Grand Harvest County Board of Commissioners reject the mediation office offer in the case of Carlson versus Jetter and direct our attorney to move forward to prepare for trial.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Fleas. Discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote please.
Mr. Wheelock.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Yes.
Max Power.
Yes.
Limb Cool.
Yes.
Henshaw.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Police.
Yes.
Passage unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn. So move.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, seconded by Limb Cool. All in favor?
Aye.
Both passes. Thank you. Have fun with us. All right.